At six thirty, we will go ahead and call the meeting to order. First item on our agenda is review and approval of the minutes from last meeting. If anybody has any additions or corrections, I think I'll give them to Linda. Otherwise, I would be looking for a motion.
I think there's a word missing on the comments from Steve Barrett on page two. He just believes that the more businesses you have in town makes your town even stronger.
What was the word you wanted?
Stronger.
I think it's what he had in his comments. On with the accepted minutes with the corrections.
I have an objection. I don't like the way it's written, what I said out of the audience here, that I recuse myself from anything I did. You made a statement about trucks or whatever. I said, "Yeah," like, "Yeah, they are working." I never recused myself from anything. And then I informed Melissa that I'm actually a subcontractor to a subcontractor on that work. I don't need to reset from anything.
I guess we've got all that on video, Doug. I don't know if I'm in a position to argue what you said or didn't say.
Yeah. I know what you said. To me, you said something about dirt and that there.
Yeah.
And trucks. I said, "Yeah," but then I said, "I don't recuse myself." Or I didn't say those words like that. I said, "Yes, to that I-- yeah, there is trucks there." You know? Because the question went on. You can look at it and see for yourself, but that was the intent of it. It says here that I recused myself, and I never did. Two years ago, whenever that job, I never recused myself from anything. I did it on there, so I just wanted that statement I'm making.
I guess I would defer to whatever's on the video, sir, and I don't have the ability to review that here.
Did you look at it, Linda?
I did. And maybe when you said, "Yes," I took that as--
But did you listen to the question, the way it said dirt and that?
I did.
That's what I said, "Yes" to, and then the question--
I listened. I have quite a few times.
So you do have a motion--
Yeah.
--on the floor.
A motion, do I have a second? Twelve seconds, huh? Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? We'll approve the minutes. Next item this evening, public hearing, conditional use permit for a planned unit development. Mr. Carlson.
Yes, so this site plan that they would like to move forward with, it has two buildings on the site, and the zoning ordinance allows for one primary building, so this planned unit development application would allow for two buildings on the site. And essentially, the same conditions as were put forth with the rezone would apply, with the exception that now, instead of a stormwater easement from ShopCo, they need to work on their stormwater discharge within that. So it would be the same conditions as the prezone would be recommended. And then I'll let David tell you all about it.
Hi, my name is David. I'm with Massey. The layout of the site hasn't changed from the last few times you've seen this. We're just proposing a second principle of structure on the property, the reason for the PUD and the conditional use. As far as stormwater management goes for the project, originally, we were going to acquire an easement from ShopCo to convey the stormwater to their pond. That's no longer going to happen, so what we're going to end up doing is underground detention below the parking lot and conveying it out to the 24-inch storm line in Manorville Avenue. And if that line doesn't have capacity, I talked to DOT about just conveying it directly to Mastin Creek through their right-of-way, since there's no utility easement or drainage easement along the frontage of Aladee along Manorville Avenue. So. Do you have any more questions? I'm here to answer.
Thank you. With that said, I'd like to go ahead and open up the public hearing. If you've got anything you'd like to share on the matter, if you'd like to podium, give us your name and address, please. If not, I will go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you.
I don't see any issues, though.
Just very quickly reviewing the issues around the PUD and the general vision. It looks like they're complying with what's outlined here.
One question I have is will be in the-- not in the PUD, but just where we have the fire truck coming in and cutting across the curb. Is that okay? Is it kind of turning where it is, or did we just kind of come in there on that fifth page?
Go ahead, David. I met with the fire chief--
Yeah.
--and we discussed that issue and if it's okay with it--
Okay.
--going over the curb in that one area if they have to enter the parking lot, since obviously they don't have permanent structures in that area, since it's a fire item or something like that. Yeah, there shouldn't be any issues with coming up over the curb like that. To get it to the point where we would not have to do that, we would be causing all kinds of other issues with the entrance to that. The fire department can make that decision.
Any concerns for garbage trucks, or anything that they can make that turn?
Actually, we discussed that, Mr. Carlson and I, and they are actually going to have, due to the use, they're not going to have a lot of waste generation, so they're actually going to have cans that they're going to be taking out to the curb. There's not going to be a dumpster.
Teresa, we have staff looked at it to make sure that we're meeting 15% for green space and the lot size as part of a commercial meeting.
Yeah, and actually, as David said, this wasn't the first time that this event's offended you, so--
Yes.
We had worked at that, yeah.
So we've made sure that you've got the whole goals addressed.
With the affirmation that we've met all of the conditions of the PUD, I'll move that we approve the CUP for the PUD.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Sorry.
Motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
I'm out of state.
One second. Next item this evening, forgive me if I mispronounce it, Poisonton Cogler, Ms. Laura Chamberlain.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Laura Chamberlain. I am a planner with Poisonton Cogler Group Incorporated, or HKGI. You've met my colleagues Brad Shive and Jesse Thorndson through the comprehensive planning process for Capson Upward. I am the project manager for the next step in the process, which is our zoning and subdivision ordinance update. So tonight is just a quick overview kickoff meeting, get some introductions, look at the process, and a quick overview of community engagement, get some of your input on some of those elements, and then have a quick discussion on some issues that you would like to be addressed during this ordinance update process. So, as you're already familiar with HKGI, with Brad and Jesse's work, we do a lot of comprehensive planning, but we also have a lot of zoning experience here in Minnesota, and have a lot of emphasis on the community engagement aspect within all of our planning processes. We have a lot of planners, such as myself, conduct day-to-day planning services as well as long-term planning, so knowing the day-to-day functions of the municipality in addition to those elements that go into a comprehensive plan, and have some specific code updates that we have been working through with a lot of cities addressing changes in state statutes as well as other elements. So the process that we are going through for this ordinance update is put into four tasks, and right now, HKGI is contracted with the city for the first two tasks. At the end of task two, the city will receive from us an annotated outline, which will include our estimated budget and schedule for what it would take to complete tasks three and four. And, but you can see on this slide, we have first task, which is what we're in now, project initiation, ordinance review and diagnosis. Then, as I mentioned, task two is the development of an annotated outline of the ordinances. Task three will be the largest task of actually then using that annotated outline to draft the different sections of the ordinance through an approach that we use with a series of modules that are based off of topic versus maybe order that they'll go in the code, so that we're going more dramatically, and it allows us to be-- have a more catch-all to approach. And then the final phase is the final ordinance and zoning map adoption, and then implementation. And the implementation side of it, we'll be working with city staff to have a strategy of updating things like permit applications, online resources, and things along those So currently, we're in, excuse me, phase one, which is our diagnosis of current issues. Today, had some conversations with various city staff members. Tonight, getting input from the planning commission on current issues with the ordinance. We'll also be engaging community stakeholders, people who regularly interact with the ordinance, whether that's developers, or residents, or possibly state agencies. And so today, working with city staff, we're developing a list of who we should be engaging within those stakeholder inputs, and we'd also like your input this evening on which stakeholders in the community we should be considering. And then, we will also be doing a general input element for the public, which will likely be in the form of an online survey, or possibly with our social pinpoint mapping. And that will be developed as we get closer to the end of phase one with our community engagement plan. So this is how we've focused on our collaboration between our different elements who have a stake within this project. Our timeline, as I said, the first two phases are focused right now, and our intention is to have the annotated outline and expected budget and schedule for the remainder of the project to be complete by the end of this year. It's obviously a quick turnaround from now, we've only got a couple of months, but I think we can focus on it, we can definitely handle that. And then, our intention would be, depending on what the outcome of kind of our analysis and our diagnosis is, to see what the scope will look like for the actual drafting, to hopefully finish by the end of 2019 or the beginning of 2020 would be when final adoption of the new ordinance would come through. And as I said, within this first phase, we are developing our community engagement plan and having our stakeholder sessions as well as our web engagement. So, this evening, I have a few questions listed up here as far as discussion items for you to consider and to identify some issues for if there are any parts of current ordinances that you, as your role as planning commissioners, have found challenging to understand or to use, any areas that you find are outdated or may not be needed, if you've found any inconsistencies with ordinances and inconsistencies between that and then adopted plans and policies. Obviously, the update to the comprehensive plan will now need to update the ordinances to reflect the new comprehensive plan, but if there are specific areas within there that you want to make sure we're noting. And some opportunities to simplify development, application, and approval processes, things maybe that you've heard from residents, or developers, or just have seen issues with in your capacity as commissioner. If there are areas of the city that you'd like us to concentrate on, that ordinance specifically could help address, and any changes or additions that would make things easier to use, and then, as I stated before, if you have any idea of stakeholders that you would like to be engaged in this process. Do you have any questions or thoughts on any of those, or we can go through them one by one, or--
Reason not to throw it any thought to initially, go through the list. First time we've all seen it, so--
Sure, yep, it's a lot. So, yeah, we can start just with the first one. Have there been any parts of current ordinances that have been challenging to understand or use from your experience?
Before we get too much further, I want to let everybody know that by invitation, Lonnie and I had met with Laura previous to this meeting, and had gone over some of these questions, and identified some things already. We got invited because of my years of experience plus my participation in the county community-based planning, so there were a number of things that are somewhat county-related to this that we discussed, so she's already has some information, but we'd like to get additional information from the rest of the panel.
And Lonnie, because he's expressed his frustration with the current ordinance, so I invited him just to come get it out there, so if you want to, you know, you could share with the rest of the group some of the frustrations you shared with us, too.
Like I said, I just feel that if you're green and you're going into the ordinances looking for something specific, you can go several different directions and find answers. And if you aren't aware of everything, you could be misled to think you're headed in the right direction. This whole thing needs to be redirected or made easier to use, or easier for the common businessman, home builder, whatever, to be able to go in and find what they need without being lost or assume too much. It's too easy to get misled by what we have right now. That's what I feel.
Too open to interpretation.
Absolutely. Yes.
Yeah, thank you. And some other elements that staff and then the commissioners have expressed today as well, as far as having those multiple locations throughout your ordinance where the same topic is addressed multiple times, that if one of those areas gets updated, but the others don't, then you have conflicts, and, you know, you don't necessarily have-- you want to make sure that everything's all in one spot, and that's certainly something that we'll achieve through this process.
I don't know how far into the wind you want to get, but I've always struggled with variances.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, it's just a personal thing, but what is the bar for variance?
Sure.
What is the approval process for variance?
Mm-hmm.
You're just always struggling, it's incredibly subjective.
Yep. I know that you all will be reviewing this evening, just sort of a review of the history of the variances and CUPs that have been approved over the last 20 years, and I'm going to be looking over that as well, to see if there are commonalities amongst all of those, say, maybe the side yard setback in this area shouldn't be what it is if we're just approving variances to vary from those over and over again, you know, just an example. And so, or if there are conditional uses that maybe don't have conditions spelled out within the code itself, but it's still considered a conditional use, was that necessary? So those are definitely conversations through this process that we'll be having.
Another area that was a major topic of our earlier discussion was homeowners' associations as to how many we have, and how active are they, and what happens if they go under, and how does the city assume that, or does the city assume that? How does the city stay abreast as to what their associations are in their covenants, which we don't really have a handle on? I live in an area that supposedly has an association, and I was nominated by my neighborhood as being president, but when I went to each homeowner and asked them about the association, they were okay with the covenants, but they had absolutely no interest in being part of an association, which would include dues to pay for any legal fees, they enforce the covenant. And so, it basically died on the vine, so now, we just rely on the city ordinances to be the governing body. But there may be other associations that want to, much like Southport, where they are paying a fee for the maintenance of their streets, or mowing, or cleaning of the streets, or what have you, but what if that goes away? Where does the city assume responsibility, or should they assume responsibility?
We did ask. That did enter into a few years ago about the second one, I believe, for Southport. And we had-- the city had a step in trying to work with the--
Yes, you're right.
So that goes along with the comprehensive plan on our urban expansion. If we have developments that are growing out there within the township, what should we-- what agreements should we put in place to make sure that the design standards meet the city, that if the city eventually grows to that, needs to hook up and assume that we're assured that it's going to work? So a lot of our conversation evolved around some of that.
In general, through hearing from, talking to the city engineer and other city staff, just balancing that line with the development processes of being sure to encourage development, but also make everything clear-cut, and make sure that the city's not left, you know, 10 years later or something with having to put in improvements, or whatever that should have been gone in with the development itself, and just making sure that those agreements are consistent and make sense, and easily enforceable. And so, I think that is definitely an area that we'll be updating through this. With thinking about the recent comprehensive plan update, some areas that I noted of change with the comp plan included some opportunities for, I believe, that ecological technology park up in the northern part of the city, how that could be distinct from other industrial areas, and if that would need to have its own set of zoning regulations, that's something to keep in mind. I know the greenway system that was proposed through the natural greenways, drainage ways, how to implement that via, I know we have the floodplain ordinance will be updated through this process, but if there are any other elements to consider within zoning. And then, some of the kind of design principles of especially the downtown area is another portion to be considered. So are there any other areas with thinking about the comp plan process now that you've just finished it that you'd like to see addressed within this ordinance update?
Colin's being too quiet. Come on, Colin.
Well, if you think of any, I did leave my card for everyone, so please just shoot me an email, and I can add it to our list of issues if you've had more time to think about it. I think we can talk through stakeholder groups. I know that through the comp plan process, various stakeholders were engaged at various levels through that. This, we want to make sure that we're engaging people who are dealing with the ordinance on a more regular basis, and so developers, obviously, is a large getting-- And so developers, obviously, is a large, getting the names and probably having a couple of local developers come in for one of the stakeholder groups. I think, as I mentioned before, contacting some state or county officials as far as any intergovernmental elements that we need to be considering or, you know, permits from the health department or DNR or MINDAT, that we want to make sure that our ordinances are not in conflict and the processes are streamlined. And I think, especially with the county, as we're going through subdivision processes to make sure that all of us are on the same page, I think can only be helpful. Are there any other stakeholder groups that we should be considering for that element of community engagement?
I did just briefly talk to David Martin about being part of a group and he would be more than willing to do that. So we could bring in like, actually, the folks who are putting together the plans that got submitted for consideration at the planning commission.
Right, so the representatives of the developers who have more of that technical knowledge.
Right.
That's very helpful.
Another component that we chatted very briefly about, and maybe it's just me, but I seem to have recently noticed that there seems to be a trend toward more rehabilitation, alcohol, drug treatment rehabilitation, homes, medical assistance, homes, mental health care centers and things like that, that we probably need to consider with this, in addition to our daycare needs.
What you're talking about, folks that actually take a residential home and turn it into some sort of halfway house type of establishment?
Yep, yep.
And I don't know if Tim Penny said it at the council meeting, but they're really looking for in-home daycare providers to be the ones who pick up some of the slack, you know, and have spaces available for the needs. So that would go right along with it.
Right.
Perhaps, given your comment earlier, maybe reaching out to some homeowners associations that are more active in the community, if any of you live in neighborhoods that have an active HOA, maybe seeing from their perspective what is working, what's not working, if they don't care, you know, all of that.
We can track down, we can track down who has them and see what we can...
Do you have Marty's? I'm sure Marty's is in. Actually, I have that association, right?
Yeah, you pay an association fee there.
Yep.
That's the insurance. All you own there is what you build on.
Right.
The rest of it's the association own. I believe your dues that you pay is part of taxes and part of the insurance for that green space. And then there's a whole separate one where you pool your money up so you got money to plow your snow. And as of now, the mowing, the individuals can hire their own or one or two that come in and then mow, but they have one person come in to the snow room. That's just up the road. If you want to hire them for more, you can't. But it's only like 25 bucks a year for the taxes and insurance and the green space, you know, but it isn't a very big deal.
As soon as you get somebody like Tom or somebody from that association, because I know there's a lot of covenants in different areas.
Yes.
High school, landowners, they should not have a covenant. But I don't think it ever really came up to anything, you know, nothing's ever been an issue out there around that gas money all the time.
Right.
Something that's weird in the abbey there, I know the city owns the utilities underneath the road, so they've got to fix, they put them into city standard, but the road isn't city standard to take over for policy. So one of them deals, kind of half way there, if the association ever went, you know, it's one that we really have to keep an eye on because there is insurance and taxes that have to be collected, you know, so the road is never going to be a good situation.
Yeah, I see.
Private's got to take care of it, but the city's got to maintain it or got to maintain their infrastructure underneath it. So how much of that does they have to put back, you know? I think it's always going to be a little bit of a toll there.
Is there one other one right down by the greenway?
Yeah, I think they've got, that's an association.
There is some kind, because it's like one person pools it all large.
I think that was Piglos originally, wasn't it?
I think you're right.
Carlton Townhomes?
Yeah.
The Carlton there? Yeah, they're in association. So there's West Hill, West Park.
That's right.
Most of the townhomes are associated.
So we can track those down. By the book.
There was a downtown.
Not an association. There's a chamber, a chamber, I think.
Any other thoughts on different stakeholders to engage specifically through this process?
I'm sure you can make some suggestions.
Well, I already have my running list, but we'll probably be talking with fire, safety and police, obviously with design standards of street, street design, turning radius, access, things along those lines. And then Chamber of Commerce, I don't know if, trying to think, if the county or the region has like a regional economic development authority?
So there is a county EDA and a city EDA and they are served actually by the same consultant that we can bring in.
Yep, that would probably be good.
Okay.
And then perhaps brokers or commercial real estate.
Oh.
Wrapped, you know? You have a lot of vacant commercials, what, is there anything on the permitting side that's making it difficult to sell those places?
Oh, okay.
Things along those lines? Or not enough vacant commercial? How do we designate more areas and get them developed? So, all right.
Okay.
I think that's all I have for now. I will be in touch with Teresa, with the more refined list of stakeholders as well as our community engagement plan, likely by your November meeting. I'm not sure if I will be attending that, but we'll at least have an update of where we are with, we stay on track, hopefully an annotated outline for you all to consider by your December meeting, hopefully. So maybe into January, we'll see.
Okay.
But that, that'll be good.
Thank you.
And as I said, my contact information is available on the card and if you think of anything extra, please feel free to send me an email. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is a letter from the attorney. After our last meeting, I had wrote Teresa an email, a note. Still trying to get my head around the concept of conflict of interest that is still applied to us. And I guess if I read Melonie's thoughts here, it does. Personally, I think it's a little loosely defined. I don't actively practice, but I am a CPA. The bar for the CPA, and again, just my interpretation of it, is that there's really kind of three groups of conflict of interest. You know, there's a personal conflict of interest, which is you and your wife. There's an indirect conflict of interest, which would be your family members, your siblings, your parents, so forth. And then there's the perceived conflict of interest, which is a little on the muddy side of things. But it seems becoming a larger and larger part of the conversation around here and I guess I was kind of curious where the bar is set for us. I don't know if anybody else has any thoughts on it?
Well, I would think that if you feel you have a conflict, like Sheldon, you just put on the open.
No, but I guess my fear is we get a personality in here that feels she's above all of that and on so-and-so, that doesn't apply to them, you know? How do we kind of check and balance each other out a little bit?
Well, if the next person's going to call a law on it, it's more different than anything else, right?
It's a little bit trickier on these appointed positions and the elected positions. Generally, they go through the LNC training as new officials and things. It's not so clear on the appointed positions, but I think there's probably opportunities for an education or handout that can be given that, particularly in a small community where you're potentially making decisions on your next door neighbor or, you know, close personal friend or something like that, that in a small community can be construed as a conflict of interest. So, you know, having some general guidelines that gets handed to the appointed official.
Trust me, I've been on both ends of it. I mean, I've been accused of it.
Yeah.
Somebody overheard a conversation in a public get-together. Yeah, about responding for the city's attorney.
Yeah.
It's some pretty muddy murky waters, so I'm guessing we can do to clarify a little bit. Log of activity? Everything that's been done for the last few years or anything specific you were wanting to call to our attention on this?
Well, I, you know, this kind of started, I think Dwayne was wondering, you know, are we issuing variances for the same thing?
Right. Yeah, what do we get out for a total on that? Who are we looking at? We have, wasn't that put out at one point, you see how many of those variances that we had are enforcing each other, since they were?
So the conditions are on there, yeah.
I mean, the electronic sign, I think, comes up or came up right over there. Yeah, those are all relatively different. But you'll see the electronic sign, I think, it gets brought up a lot from about 2002 forward.
I think for me, the bigger ones are how many times do we vary our setback requirements? You know, that's something that we can really address through our revision of our zoning because if we're consistently encroaching on what our current setbacks is, is our setbacks actually where they should be?
Yeah, I think some of that stems from, it used to be a straightforward, you know, all our lots were square.
Yeah.
And nowadays, that's evolved into curved streets with slow traffic, which is now starting to feed into what, why we're having to do a lot of that.
Yeah.
A lot of pie shack areas. So that's something we can look at.
Perhaps there's a different mechanism besides a variance we could address those items for a setback that doesn't have the full force like a variance has and has all the hurdles that a variance has to cross.
Be a good question for Laura.
Yeah, yeah, I'll make that note. Yeah, I knew you had something to say over this.
I think Rochester has a process called design modification to address...
The line, okay.
Yeah, to address minor setback issues so you don't have to meet that high criteria of a variance, but you can take care of these small items that...
Perfect. Like a design modification process?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, that's cool. And one thing that when I met with Laura, you know, some of the things are those conditional uses, should we have more permitted uses and fewer conditional uses? I mean, just really sort out what we want in each area and then not, you know, not need a CUP for an auto dealership and shortage units and funeral home and everything else that folks are looking to do.
Yeah, I think some of that will get teased out if we start talking about design standards, you know, through our zoning.
Yeah. The library with the conditional use permit, the elementary school, the high school. Yeah, just a lot of things, it's like why were they conditional uses and not just permitted?
Right.
Other business? We've got to reschedule next month's meeting?
Can I just ask back up one second?
Please.
From 2003 to 2012, did we skip like nine years?
Yes, because I had not put this together and then in 2012, started putting it back together again and I was told, don't go back any farther than that because I could have to where I had left off in the first place.
It's, it was rolled up and out, it goes somewhere else in here, so.
No.
No, and that was back like, which year?
No, I started doing it and I did it for like six years, seven, or from 96 to 2003 and nobody looked at it, so I stopped doing it. And then somebody asked for it again, so I went back that far.
I probably wasn't the one that got you started.
I think you're the one that started me on it and we never used it.
Yeah, I think so.
And then you asked for it again.
Yep. Sorry.
That's all right. You're using it now.
When we got Amy back, you maybe can put her on the job to...
Go back to 2000.
Fill it in. Fill it in for us.
So the 19th, would that work? So the next meeting?
Or should we just go 13th, 14th?
The 14th of council.
I know, 13th.
The 13th.
13th.
On the Tuesday.
Just in case we have to have anything.
Right. For the council, works for me. Do you want to have it?
I'm out of town, but we won't let that be a problem.
And is there any update on Mr. Wilker? Was his attorney talking to our attorney or is there...
There has been correspondence.
At least a dialogue going on?
Yep. I believe the council will be made aware of that at their meeting on Wednesday.
I wonder if everybody's talking to each other. Any other things you'd like to discuss, gentlemen? I will go ahead and adjourn the meeting. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.